I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, to order at this time. And we'll start with Brett DeSelm's leading us with the invocation. Mr. DeSelm's?
Thank you, Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. We pray for your blessing and favor over our students, teachers, and all school staff as they return to the classroom for the upcoming school year. Bless them with the enthusiasm to learn, enlighten those who teach with your wisdom, and grant protection around every school building and campus. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, hear us in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize the elected officials with us this morning. Mayor of Holly Ridge, Mr. Pete Arnean is here with us, and Sheriff Chris Thomas here with us as well. I think that's everyone that's here this morning. So thanks for being here. We ask that all of the attendants please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode at this time. And we need a motion to adopt the agenda. Ms. Commissioner Carpenter?
A motion to amend the agenda to go into a closed session for attorney-client privilege.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now we need a motion to adopt today's agenda as amended.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now moving to item number two, approval of the items on the consent agenda. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda. Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now we'll move right into item three in Presentations. And I believe we have Mr. Charles Ellis joining us this morning for the opioid settlement presentation.
Thank you very much. My name's Charles Ellis, and I'm with Warden Smith Law Firm along with Baron and Bud. We represent several municipalities and counties in North Carolina with respect to the opioid litigation. And I was here before this body about two years ago with respect to the approval of other settlements as to other defendants. So some of you, I recognize, were on the board at that time. Today, we're here to recommend to this board approval of three additional settlements as to three defendants. One is Purdue Pharma. Purdue Pharma is the manufacturing entity that manufactured Oxycontin, oxycodone. They convinced the medical providers that it was not an addictive drug, increased sales, giving grounds to the cause of action. Purdue is in bankruptcy. And they have a bankruptcy plan which will be approved in October, we anticipate, by the bankruptcy judge, approving the settlement, the payment that they are seeking to make in this case for the release of all the counties, states, and municipalities throughout the country. Second defendant is the Sackler family, and they were principals in the Purdue Pharma. They are protected somewhat by the fact that Purdue Pharma is a legal entity, a corporation. But they were involved in some of the decision-making. They also pulled money out of Purdue during the process of it losing its financial foundation. The third defendant is... There are multiple defendants. There are nine smaller opioid manufacturers. And they are small-bit players. They stopped producing... They actually produced generic opioids, stopped producing those several years ago, low volume, and also produced manufactured addiction treatment medication. So those are the three entities with whom we are recommending we resolve the claims. I'll talk about each briefly, about the settlement with respect to each. But remember, in this litigation, the Attorney General, the state of North Carolina is also a party, like we are, and all of the other counties and municipalities. And they are recommending the settlement, all three. All of the other counties are also agreeing so far to agree to... Have agreed to each of these settlements. With respect to the first defendant, Purdue Pharma, the provisions call for payment of $1.5 billion, which will be cash and payable over the same kind of structure that the previous defendants have paid. The Purdue... That's Purdue Pharma. The Sackler family will pay $6.5 billion for a total of $8 billion from those entities. That will be paid in money, cash, through the state like before, the same formula to distribute the money to the different counties based on the number of people in the county, the number of opioids that went into the county. You all who are on the board were familiar with that distribution process, same formula. The third settlement as to those nine small-bit opioid manufacturers, $1.2 billion. That's about $845 million. Of that will be cash, distributed just like the money that Purdue and the Sacklers are paying. The $345 million or so will be medications, anti... Or treatment medications for opioid addiction. That medication will be distributed to public hospitals for use. And so that will be... That will be distributed pursuant to the states. So the state Attorney General in a committee decides how those... Where those medicines and medications will go, which public hospitals within the state of North Carolina. Those... That's an overview of the three settlements. We recommend strongly that you approve it. You would be required to simply approve the bankruptcy plan that's for Purdue Pharma, which calls for the $1.5 billion payment, the settlement agreement with the Sacklers, which is $6.5, and then the settlement and participation agreement with... In the settlement of the nine defendants. And Brett and I have been talking in advance last week, or a couple of weeks ago, and he's got a resolution to make it easy for you that has been blessed by us and the Nationals as well as the Attorney General. So that's where we are. I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have. I will add one other thing. The money that's took... The money that comes in as the previous monies that you all have received is to be used for the same purposes, abatement. There's a long laundry list that Brett has, and I think most of you are familiar with, what you can do. There's a lot of stuff that you can do with that money as long as it has a tethered to abatement, opioid addiction abatement and prevention. So with that said, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions? Or Mr. DeSelm's, anything you want to add?
I think Mr. Ellis did a great job. The state Attorney General's recommending this. Of course, our attorneys are recommending this as well. I think it's a great idea to sign on the settlement. And the resolution, if adopted, would give us the ability of the chairman, the manager, myself, the ability to sign all the necessary documents.
So you're looking for an approval now, though, a motion?
Yes, sir.
Make that a motion to approve the Onslow County participation in a proposed settlement of opioid.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you all. Good to see you all.
Good job.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't quite get into the comment window there. You kept it kind of short.
I quit.
But I would ask that we consider a workshop on this and... Because I'd like to see our monies moving a little more fluid, getting out to the community, and especially now that we're getting additional funds, seeing that moving a little smoother, if you may. It may not be a good choice of words, but I want to see money moving.
Right, right. And I think it's the... With Ms. Sanders, we'll, I think, still heading that up with SOAR or with the opioid settlement. So I think we can get into... Include that in our workshop and a discussion on what's going on, that update. A few of us may not have been on here when we did the first round. So I think that would be a good idea. The board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meetings. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. So Mr. Smitherman, anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Keith Edwards.
Good morning, commissioners. This has been 25 years since I've been to a meeting. I had one thing to speak of, but now hearing the gentleman before me, that sounds an awful lot like the tobacco settlement. And we know how bad that was. But that's what the opioid thing sounds like to me, this money, 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 money. My comment this morning is to talk about the geese on Western Extension. I don't know if this commission authorized those big developments over there. I don't know if it was in the city limits at that time. I think it was outside the city limits when they started building all that over there. But they allowed them to build it, and they made them put in retention ponds. And that just says, "Come on, geese. I'm right here. There's no predators. Let's breed right here in these retention ponds." If that's the case, that they have to have those ponds, why can't they enclose them with some chicken wire or netting or something that discourages the geese from staying there? And that's what it's all about because twice members of myself and my family have almost been rear-ended there because of the geese. And this is a bird sanctuary city. Am I going to go to jail if I run one over? Probably. That's just my luck. But I don't know if this is the right body to discuss this with, or do I have to go to DOT or the city or somebody? Has to control those. But I don't know. This is my first starting place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Tim Bogey.
I can solve that geese problem if you want to talk afterwards without hurting anybody. So don't think I'm going to poison or something. Messers, good morning. Chairman, everyone knows me here. Tim Bogey, I live out in Hubert. Been dealing with my son who lives out in Major Manor. Been talking about the roads, but I'd rather not talk about that today. What I'd like to talk about is my appreciation to the commissioners for listening to me over the last two years. I believe that's when we started this, Chairman Foster, is back in '23. I know you all hear dozens of requests, probably daily, about different roads, understanding that there's nothing you all can do about the roads. One thing I also found out in my research is you all also do not... Well, the county, land development, everybody like that does not enforce covenants, which is interesting as well. However, I still want to put my appreciation out there for hearing my concerns because this has actually helped out quite a bit on how I educate my kids, on what the county actually does and how the elected officials actually work and why it's so important to be a part of the election process. So I really do appreciate that. I also appreciate the money that you all put in for funding this year. I realize it's not a lot. However, it's more than last year. So I do appreciate that as well for taking that step to really focus on those things that you all hear on a continual basis about these roads. And I look forward to working further on what that's going to look like. I also appreciate the county's transparency with the land developments, the register of deeds. It really helped out quite a bit being able to research and educate myself on this issue prior to me coming up here and talking. So it really helped out with the transparency this county provides in order for people like me to do the research and have information and know what they're talking about before they get up here before you because anybody can ramble. I was watching Onslow County today, yesterday, on the YouTube. I saw Mr. Bauer talk about orphan roads, which I really appreciate him doing so. He told me about the meeting on September 10th at 6:00 p.m. in dealing with orphan roads here in this building. Couple of things. I don't know how that word's going to spread to everyone because not many people watch Onslow today, which is just interesting, too. So I'd like to know how I can help spread that word. And I also like to know how I could help, if any, with the IDing of other roads that may have this same repair. I'm free labor, so whatever you need, I can do that. A couple of concerns I have is with real estate agency here in town. Is there still providing misinformation about roads? A road was sold on Cutlass Street on June 16th, referred to a covenant of the 2010 New Century Homes taking care of the roads, which we know that's not a thing anymore. And then on June 26, 707, Major Boulevard was sold with no covenants and no road maintenance, no restrictions within their deed. I've talked to the North Carolina Real Estate Commission about this. They're still working on their investigation on it. I don't know if the commissioner panel, if you all have any pull on that or anything like that, but I think we need to get a handle on this upfront, not just for Maynard but for other roads as we... As people start buying things because to me, they're buying a false product. That's really all I'm really going to say as far as that goes. I really want to iterate my appreciation. I also noticed that certain county ordinances are being enforced down in Major Manor. I believe there's a trailer when you first come in there that's been abandoned. I know that fellow was going to court a couple of weeks ago. Don't know how that panned out because that's not really my business. However, I do appreciate those things being done because it also goes into seeing that not only are we looking to take care of the road down there, but we're also looking to clean that area up, which is very important as well because that's going to raise real estate as well in that area. People might be able to overlook the road if the rest of the place doesn't look like it's a junkyard. So I do appreciate the things that the county is doing. Like I said, it's gone a long way for myself in educating my children on how the election process works and why it's so important at this level to vote and to be a part of that process. So thank you very much. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Bogey. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ari Ruckwitz.
I am reading with minimal commentary and brief editing for ease of reading allowed a letter written by Staff Attorney Samantha Lawrence on behalf of the Freedom From Religion Foundation, FFRF, and delivered to the board on April 3rd regarding a constitutional violation occurring at Onslow County Board of Commissioners meetings. FFRF is a national nonprofit organization with over 42,000 members across the country, including more than 900 members and a local chapter in North Carolina. Our purposes are to protect the constitutional principle of separation between state and church and to educate the public on matters relating to nontheism. A concerned Onslow County community member, that's me, the reader, has reported that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting begins its meetings with Christian prayer led by government officials. For instance, at the March 17, 2025, meeting, a county attorney, Brett DeSelm's, delivered a prayer whose phrasing I will not repeat, but as he did again today, either reader or hope he is acting under coercion. What a terrible thing to hope for someone. We write to request that the board immediately refrain from opening its meetings with exclusively Christian government-led prayer because this practice violates the Establishment Clause and the constitutional rights of Onslow County citizens. Prayer at government meetings is unnecessary, inappropriate, and divisive. The best solution is to discontinue invocations altogether. All board members and meeting attendees are, of course, free to pray privately or to worship on their own time in their own way. However, board members do not need to worship on taxpayers' time. The board ought not to lend its power and prestige to religion by scheduling hosting or conducting governmental prayer. Citizens, including Onslow County's nonreligious citizens, are compelled to come before the board and its committees on important civic matters to seek licenses and permits and to participate in important decisions affecting their livelihoods, property, children, and quality of life. The opening prayer excludes those community members who belong to the 37% of Americans who are non-Christians, including the nearly 1 in 3 Americans who are now religiously unaffiliated. It is coercive, embarrassing, and intimidating for nonreligious citizens to be required to make a public showing of their nonbelief by not rising or praying or else to display deference or obeisance toward a religious sentiment in which they do not believe but which their government members clearly do. Per Santa Fe Independent School District, v. Doe in 2000, government-sponsored prayer has the improper effect of coercing those present to participate in an act of religious worship. Beginning with a Christian prayer and offering only a brief moment of silence for all of the beliefs shows clear favoritism for Christianity over all other religious and nonreligious backgrounds. Local government officials should not be in the business of leading prayers themselves. As you may be aware, the Supreme Court addressed government prayer in Town of Greece, New York, v. Galloway in 2014. This case did not address situations in which government officials themselves led the prayers. The court in Galloway only approved opening a neutral forum for others, including nonChristians and atheists, to give invocations. Our government is prohibited from prescribing prayers to be recited in our public institutions. Galloway citing Engel v. Vitale, 1962. It is inappropriate and coercive for the board or other members of the county government to direct meeting attendees to rise, participate in, or otherwise show deference to the invocations. The Supreme Court specified in Galloway that its analysis would be different if town board members directed the public to participate in the prayers. Although board members themselves stood, bowed their heads, or made the sign of the cross during the prayer, they at no point solicited similar gestures from the... By the public. Coercive government prayer practices continue to be challenged in federal courts. In Lunville, Rowan County, 2017, the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, which has jurisdiction over North Carolina, found that when government officials are the only ones giving the prayers, the prayers are unconstitutional because the officials left members of minority faiths unwilling participants unwilling participants, or discomforted observers to the sectarian exercises of a religion to which they did not subscribe. FFRF won the Cobranch v. City of Parkersburg suit in the Fourth Circuit against City of Parkersburg, West Virginia, in 2022 over the city council's practice of opening each prayer, each meeting with a recitation of the Lord's Prayer. The court permanently enjoined the city council from opening its meetings with the Lord's Prayer, declaring the practice unconstitutional. The court found the city council ran afoul of the Establishment Clause when it wrapped itself in a single faith. The court noted several key factors that led to its conclusion that the prayer practice was unconstitutional, including unduly heightened risk of coercion by the state, by virtue of the government identity of the prayer givers acting in unison, the invariable nature of the sectarian prayer, and the implicit and sometimes express invitation to the public in attendance to join in, all in the relative intimacy of a local government setting. The board's government-led prayers mirror the coercive effect found in Lund. In order to comply with the First Amendment and demonstrate your respect for the diverse range of religious and nonreligious residents living in the Onslow County community, we urge you to concentrate on civil matters and leave religion to the private conscience of each individual by ending the practice of hosting prayers at your meetings. Please inform us in writing of the steps you are taking to resolve this matter so that we may inform our complainant. Thank you from FFRF for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smithman.
That is our last speaker today, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I believe it's time for Carter to present himself this morning, so we will start with some public hearings this morning, and Mr. Metcalf, welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. Good morning, Vice Chairman. Good morning, county commissioners. The first item before you from the Planning Department is the Jackson rezoning, P R E Z 2025, number 17. The applicant is Mr. Timothy Jackson, and the owners of the property is Mr. Jackson and Ms. Melody Jackson. So we take an overview of the request. It's from Residential 15, or R15, to Rural Agriculture, or R A. Tax map number is 337-40.10. It's located at 1221 Ramsey Road in the Jacksonville township, and the rezoning area is the entire parcel, or 0.46 acres. The existing use of the property is a nonconforming commercial. It is a contractor's office for Jackson's Lawn and Landscaping. Approval of this rezoning would make it a conforming use because a contractor's office is allowed in rural agriculture, but not allowed in residential 15. Overview of their services: There is a 12-inch and 18-inch Onwassa water mains along Ramsey Road. The nearby area is served by individual septic systems and the fire services for Half Moon. So we take a look at the traffic. Our most recent traffic count, the closest that we could find, was from 2022 with a trip count of 5,000. Staff estimates the capacity close to 15,000 for Ramsey Road. Schools serving the property are Stateside Elementary, Jacksonville Commons, and Northside High School. The elementary and the high school have capacity, while Jacksonville Commons Middle School is currently over capacity. Staff would not project any new additional students if the rezoning would be approved. Here you can see the current zoning for the property. There are 15 in the light pink color. The adjacent property there and most, again, that surrounding area is rural agriculture. We take a look at the two districts. R15's purpose is to accommodate moderate-density, single-family residential development in our suburban areas of the county, again, have the necessary infrastructure to support suburban development. While comparison with rural agriculture, as its purpose is to maintain that rural development pattern, and that preserves our agricultural character of the county, allows for low-density single-family, but also some of those nonresidential uses such as a contractor's office. The comprehensive plan details the property as rural residential, and its intent is to provide for low-density, single-family, and kind of, again, those rural areas, the fringes of the county, but not the agricultural forestry areas. Again, that's that in-between between suburban growth and agricultural forestry. And its purpose there, you can see with the land use development summary, is to provide for that density of up to two dwelling units per acre, but also allow for those limited retail and service uses, and we want them predominantly at crossroads. That's good planning, but they can as well just serve along those, you know, major or minor collectors and arterials in those areas. Here you can see the whole area is in that rural residential category. There are no environmental conditions on the property. There's no regulated flood zones, no blue line streams, and no wetlands have been submitted to county staff at this time. So we take a look at reasonableness and in the public interest. Objective 1.1 is for and against. R15 is a supporting category for rural residential. It does allow for two dwelling units per acre, but so is R A. So in this case, both of our zoning districts, current and proposed, kind of fit our comprehensive plan. But the rezoning also is supported by, we want to preserve our rural landscape. Adding more rural agriculture land would do that. We want to promote a broad range of commercial activities, and objective 6.3, it's one we don't see a lot, we want to support the reuse of existing commercial sites. This is an existing business. So Horizon 2040 would recommend approving this rezoning. Take a look at the Planning Board's recommendation. They met on August 7th and voted unanimously to recommend the approval of this rezoning request. No citizens spoke against it, and no military impacts were presented during the Planning Board meeting. The remarks from our Chairman of the Planning Board are as follows: "The total of the 0.46 acres on Ramsey Road is zoned. R15 is proposed to be rezoned to R A." No citizens spoke against, and this would bring the existing nonconforming use of a contractor's office into conformity and consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land use map. You can see an overview of the property, the existing business there. You can see a few vehicles on site, as well as the existing structures. As well, that's what it looks like from the front of the property, and there you can also see where we've posted for today. So it's respectfully requested the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z 2025, number 17, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. We will now open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do. Tim Jackson is signed up.
Mr. Jackson?
My name is Timothy Jackson. I'm the owner of Jackson's Lawn and Landscaping, and I'm here representing my company, and we'd like to get the property in rural agricultural zone, and the building itself is becoming dilapidated, and we're wanting to tear it down and build a new one. That's basically how we're doing, for our equipment and stuff.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Any other speakers, Mr. Smithman?
There are no other speakers signed up, sir.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the board.
Motion to approve.
There you go. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Metcalf, come on back up for a secondary access hearing.
Yes, sir. So this item is from the Onslow County Planning and Development Department. It's an amendment to the subdivision ordinance, or subdivision ordinance text amendment on secondary access. SOTA 2025, number 1. So the context for this proposed change, in 2023, the North Carolina General Assembly passed House Bill 600, which adjusted 160D-702, it's our grant of power, to where we get our authority as a local government to enact development regulation. And in that section, they adjusted, saying that no zoning or other development regulation, so they're implying U D Os as well, you can't have a stricter requirement than what the North Carolina Fire Code states for when you require secondary access. The Fire Code used to be 30 units. Thirty units or 30 lots of secondary access was required. Well, it was changed to 100 units. North Carol-- in Onslow County, we stayed with our structural requirement for the good of the communities, that in the event of emergency, it's more helpful to have a secondary access than not. You want one in the sense of an emergency. So we did not adjust our requirement because it was not required to do so until state law changed, in which case now we are required, per this section of 160D, to not have a stricter standard than North Carolina Fire Code. And so North Carolina Fire Code currently is set at 100 dwelling units. So we are proposing to change 608.6, our secondary access for fire apparatus, and we're changing our number simply from 30 to 100. And again, this is in alignment with the change from North Carolina law as we're responding to that. So July 10th, the Onslow County Planning Board voted five to one to recommend approval of the request. Yes, it was not unanimous. One board member thought, as for the good of the community, that we should have the lower number, and, but the rest of the board, again, voted in favor because we want to respect state law. No citizens spoke against the application, and we have had a few comments in favor of it from specific developers, though. So no military impacts were presented during the Planning Board meeting. So it's respectfully requested the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed subdivision text amendment of SOTA 25, number 1, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This is staff presentation, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. Mr. Smithman will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir, we do not.
All right, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, let me just say, I mean, I'm sure the developers like this, but you guys, when the, when the citizens start coming to us and complaining that they can't get out of their driveway, or they can't get a fire truck in when their house is on fire, this goes straight to the legislature. We're doing what we have to do because they've required it.
I would say I'd agree with Mr. Bennett. Having done several things with fire departments in the community, when we go into these apartment complexes that don't have a ingress. Having done several things with fire departments on the community side of things, when you go into these apartments that don't have ingress and egress, it is very difficult for those trucks to be able to service the community, so I can't imagine what it's like when there's a fire and, again, even having an exit route in the case of a major fire in those communities. So, Mr. Bennett, I'd agree with you.
I'll third that. It didn't make much sense. I mean, it makes sense from the developer's standpoint, but I don't think it's great for the citizens either, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Metcalf, and I believe that brings us to our Commissioner or our manager's comments, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Smithman?
Thank you, sir, and thank you to Mr. Bogey for advertising our Orphan Roads program that is going to be kicked off on September 10th, I believe. Yeah, September 10th, a week from today. This, the board has put forward $2 million to create a loan fund so that some of these communities that like to, would like to address their road conditions have that opportunity financially through the county. I wanted to also just bring to the public's attention and the board that we are closing the loop on several new relationships with our municipalities. We have, effective October 1st, will be providing IT services for the town of Swansboro. Today, we are forwarding a new contract to take over the code enforcement, building code enforcement activities on North Topsail Beach on behalf of that town. We are working with Onwassa to have a, have joint vehicle maintenance of their vehicles at the Water and Sewer Authority. We're working with the base on an intergovernmental agreement for dust control, and we have many, many intergovernmental relationships with the base already, and pursuing additional conversations with the City of Jacksonville and the Onslow County school system about how we can work better together and formally. I'll tell you that the Fire Steering Committee for the Fire Master Plan did meet last week and awarded a contract to Mission CIT to begin the Fire Service Master Plan, and that work will be kicking off in the next couple of weeks. And then finally, believe it or not, we have already started working on the budget for next year. This is our four-year financial plan. We promised you that we made a goal to achieve, and our CFO, Kevin Patterson, has produced an outline of that work going forward, and the department directors will get their first taste of this new initiative tomorrow. So we are already beginning on our plan for the next four years, beginning July 1, 2026. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smithman. We'll start with Commissioner comments. Anybody want to volunteer, or we just want to start? How you feeling this morning, Commissioner Page?
I'm doing good. I want to thank everybody for coming today, and I'm glad the Orphan Road deal, I hope it does work for a lot of people. There's a price to pay for it, but at least there's something that's better than nothing. And, Mr. Bogey, thank you so much for giving us the kudos you did. Also, on our prayer deal, ma'am, I understand, I hear what you're saying, but dag on it, enough's enough. We open our meetings with prayer, we will continue to open with prayer, and I've been through this lawsuit once before in the 90s, and we're going to continue to open it with prayer. You waste five minutes of our time every time, and enough's enough. And with that being said, thank you and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Commissioner Davis?
You want me to follow that?
Follow that.
All right. Well, actually, I do want to follow that, and particularly to the staff, I want to say thank you for safety. I know it has been, I saw it in the newsletter, which was, you know, you see something in the newsletter, okay, they're talking about it. But now I'm starting to see signs, I'm starting to see initiative, and I appreciate that, and I'd like us to drive, really drive that home. Without going into detail, I would just like this, continue to see us drive that home, and thank you. You know, this microphone is not coming on by itself like it usually does. Whoever's in the back room there, but thank you for what you do. Being a sound guy, the guy in the back room, I get it, okay? Anyway, back on topic, the safety, thank you. Thank you for making safety an initiative and working that with our employees to protect them. That means a lot to me. The geese, I think the gentleman with the geese is gone, but I think there are some, I don't know, it sounds like where that was is in the city.
Yes.
But I, so I would recommend working with the city on that, and this is me, but there are definitely folks out there that there's ways, I believe, that you can work with local farmers and stuff to perhaps deal with that. But, Mr. Bogey, thank you. I've been sitting in an elected seat for, this is my eighth year, and it is far and few between that your folks come to the, to the lectern and say thank you. So I'm sure that means more to these guys down here because you've been working with them for two years, but I need to pay you the compliment for being just a guy of integrity and honor in doing that and recognizing what these guys down the way here have done on your behalf and listening to you, so thank you. And then on the partnerships, Mr. David, thank you for really working hard on the partnerships. I know I have probably drove you crazy with that one, but I am very thankful that you are working on that. And I would only, my only ask for that is, I saw the one in the newsletter today, working with Swansboro on the fire service side. I would, I would bear a creek, I'd like to see us pull in Hubert Volunteer Fire Department since they're like a stone's throw away from them, but I'm very thankful to see this energy behind the partnership, so thank you for that. And otherwise, board, thank you for what we're getting accomplished, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes, without duplicating what my fellow commissioners have already said, I just, again, Mr. Bogey, I want to say thank you so much, really, for taking the initiative to do your homework, because it is different when you sit out there and you look in. Until you really get immersed in the facts of what government can do, you, you'll want to throw a stone. And having sat here for a while, I just had a conversation with our attorney Brett last week about that. It's very different once you do understand that there's only so much we can do, and we do our best to do all that we can with the powers that we have. And I appreciate you just taking the initiative to go and investigate that and to share it with your children about the importance of the election process, and also just to promote for us our September 10th meeting, that was really good. I was wondering as well how we were really going to get that word out, so hopefully that added to it. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful fall-like week.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here, and have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bogey, I appreciate your comments. I do want to say that there are over 1,000 Realtors in the Onslow County Board of Realtors, and every one of us is independent, and I, we have an ethical obligation to disclose to people when we know that there's a road maintenance issue. I hope that most of them do that, but homeowners have a legal obligation to disclose the state of their roads when they, when they sell their homes. So there, there are several different layers. All the attorneys that I know of in Onslow County that do real estate closings have a, have a disclosure, that they have a buyer sign when they know that there's an unmaintained road in their subdivision. People probably don't notice it or don't know what they're signing when they're signing a thousand different papers, but, but those disclosures are there. Enough for that. I appreciate this board allowing me to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference a couple of weeks ago. I was able to attend several good seminars on tax reappraisal, on strategic fire service planning, on water sewer infrastructure funding, and I did one on disaster recovery, so got a lot of good information that hopefully will be of benefit to Onslow County. And I, somebody sent me an article a few days ago that's in the Family RV Magazine, along the coast, North Carolina's Onslow County. It was a great article about Onslow County and our RV parks and all of the opportunities and recreational opportunities in Onslow County. This is a national magazine. Person that sent it to me is from Tennessee. So, yeah, we're, words are getting out there. I saw that we were about $415 million in, in tourism-generated economy, so we thank everybody for being here, we thank everybody who comes to visit Onslow County, and I hope you have a great day. Thanks.
Hey, Mr. Bennett. Vice Chairman?
Just a couple of things. Tony, what you said at the very beginning, I stand behind you 100%. You look at the wall, it says, "In God we trust." You know, one of the things I heard, it says that we worship God during our meetings. We don't worship God because we pray. We acknowledge the existence of God, that's why we do what we do, and then we also acknowledge the wishes of other people that chose not to believe in God, and we have a moment of silence. So, you know, if that's the case, if we don't, if that's the case, if that's the case, our oath of offices mean nothing, our testimony in court means nothing. You know, when we put our hand on the Bible, and, you know, you talk about separating church and state, well, there's one right there. But, you know, we're not going to change, and I'm not going to sit here and listen to this every meeting without saying something and defending God. I'm not going to do it. We put it on the wall. If you look back here, it says, "In God we trust." Our money says, "In God we trust." So if you're that adamant about not believing in God, then turn your money in. Don't spend any money. Go to the barter system, whatever it is. We're not here to preach, we're not here to worship, but we're not doing any of that. We're conducting government business. All we're doing is acknowledging our God, your God or whatever God you choose to worship. That's what we're doing. And that's what God wants us to do, as far as I'm concerned, is to respect and acknowledge Him in all things. That's how I feel, and that's not going to change. And, and for goodness sakes, that sign up here is so big, and I love it, that's not going to change either. And I don't know about you, but I'm not giving up my money because it says, "In God we trust." Okay? You know, everybody talks about the fear that the root of all evil is money. No, it's not. The root of all evil is the love of money. So I don't know where we're going with this, but I just wanted to back up Tony Page. I'm pretty adamant about it, and I'm getting really tired of hearing about it every single meeting, the lawsuits. If the lawsuits were that serious, then we wouldn't have the oaths of office. We wouldn't have put our hands on the Bible, and everything we do in court would be null and void. Okay? Because when you go to court, you put your hand on the Bible and you swear to testify to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, guess what? So help you God. Anyway, enough of that. I just want to say, I'm really impressed with our staff. I'm impressed with David Smithman and what he has done, because if you look at the county manager's position, everybody that's involved in the county, and you see how fast the growth in this county is progressing, it's unbelievable. And to be able to maintain the finances, the budgets, and everything else at this fast, rapid pace, I think we're projected to be over $300,000 within 10 years, something like that for Onslow County, which is unbelievable. I mean, that's huge. When I got here in 1990, we didn't even have Western Extension. Walmart was it. And it's kind of ironic, because now that whole area is torn down, and I live back there now and in a development. So my hat's off to you, David, for staying up with it, Angie, for your strategic plan, and what you guys are doing. I really do appreciate it. And the last thing I want to say, because I wasn't going to say anything, but we're in the sacred part of the year, it's college football, and I wanted to say this, because I got a lot of text messages, and thank you, Mr. Davis, for your message. But no one gave Florida State a chance, and I just want to say on the record, 31-17 Florida State. Alabama has fell off their throne, John. So instead of rolled tide, I think the Knolls rolled tide.
You got us, brother. I can't say that.
So, but anyway, it's a good college season, and I appreciate everybody taking the time to be here, and we'll see you at the next one, and God bless y'all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Appreciate you not mentioning the wheels falling off the Tar Heel football press.
I didn't say a word.
How much did y'all pay for that?
That was bad.
Yes.
Y'all paid $25 million?
I couldn't tell you. Interested, though. Just appreciate everybody coming in to speak today. Mr. Bogey, we appreciate you coming in, the fact that you come in, share concerns, thoughts, and we have great dialogue back and forth to come to, get to something that's going to hopefully benefit the citizens. The manner in which you presented yourself, outstanding, working together, and that's what this podium is for, to bring issues to us, to find ways to, to, to support the citizens in the county. That includes the emails that we receive from, from citizens. If you don't get a response back from one of us, email us again, because there's quite a few emails that, that come in. because there's quite a few emails that come in, and we try and keep up, keep up with that. We do want to respond and do everything we can to give you the answer. Sometimes it's the answer you'd like to hear, and sometimes it is not. But it's always good to at least have the answer and the acknowledgement of that. I do know that we have a lot of work that we've been doing in Onslow County, and the team that has been putting the work in from strategic planning to involvement with the municipalities and everyone that makes government work. This is where the rubber meets the road. And I love the local level, because that's where the work gets done. We're far removed from the federal level and somewhat removed from the state level, but we all live right here with the decisions that are made here. And I know we had a request that Ms. Hoover was excited about the other day. She got that information back to me quickly, and I will forward that information out to the organization that requested it. But the lack of transparency is not an issue, that we want to make sure everybody's aware of all the, all the information that is out there. I appreciate what the Vice Chairman said. I appreciate what Commissioner Paget said. This board, for years, has made sure that they have taken the steps to follow and be in compliance with the Establishment Clause. Our attorney has reviewed the prayers that he uses. The previous attorney did the same. And part of that comes down to coercion. And one thing that we have not asked anyone to do is stand and join us. We have remained seated, so the coercion is not there. We do, however, ask you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So to this morning, I'm going to end this meeting. Before we go into our closed session, I watched the tribute to Toby Keith, the late Toby Keith, great American country music patriotic man that ended his concerts with this, and I will end this meeting with this this morning, and I'll add one piece to it. Never apologize for being patriotic or for your faith. We need a motion to go into a closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
We are in closed session. Thank you for joining us today.